...of Colonial Highlands. Number four is the preliminary plat for the Gardens of Colonial Highlands. And then five is Scooters, the master alternative sign plan. Number six is the planned development for Ridgewood Place. And seven is the preliminary plat for them as well. And finally, on number eight, the final plat for Ridgewood. Then number nine, we'll have other business, and ten, we'll finally adjourn. So with that, I entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I so moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Same sign. Motion carried. Okay, now, number two is the public hearing rezoning for St. Mary's, which I opened on July the 10th. At this time, um... Does the staff need to go ahead and read it?
No.
No, we don't. Okay. I just need a motion to continue to August the 14th.
So moved.
I'm sorry?
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
Let me have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, the public hearing for St. Mary's will be continued to Monday, August the 14th. Number three, we have the public hearing, which is a public hearing for Gardens of Colonial Highlands. It's also related to item four, which we'll hear together and we'll vote on them separately. At this time, I'd like to, um... Go ahead and have... I would like to read the instructions first before the public hearing. I'll open the public hearing. I'll call for exhibits from our city attorney. The staff will make their presentation, then I will have the applicant make theirs. We'll call for witnesses in favor, witnesses opposed. We'll have general discussions, and I'll close the public hearing and we'll vote. So at this time, I'll open the public hearing for the Gardens of Colonial Highlands, and our attorney will call... I call for exhibits from our attorney. Thank you.
Madam Chairman, I offer the following exhibits into the record. Exhibit one, staff report with attachments. Two, affidavit of publication in the examiner on July 8, 2017. Three, application with attachments. Four, 185-feet notification map. Five, names and addresses of property owners within 185 feet of the site. Six, copy of the letter sent to said property owners. Seven, Title IV, land use section Blue Springs Code of Ordinances by reference. And eight, 2014 comprehensive plan by reference.
I want to thank you. Mr. Jury?
All right, thank you, Chairman Banks and Commissioners. Before you today is a request from the applicant, Randy Salee, to approve the planned development concept plan and preliminary plat for a 24-acre parcel that will allow the development of 64 paired homes on two family lots, or 128 dwelling units, along with the six open-space tracks held in common. Site is situated between Major Road, or future Major Road to the north, Wyatt Road to the south, the previously approved Colonial Highlands development to the east, which is SF-7 zoning, and the existing Timothy Lutheran Church SO zoning, Service Office zoning, to the west. The current site, or the subject property, was rezoned on June 19th from County Ag to two-family zoning. That was approved by City Council on the 19th of June. And I'll go into a little bit further detail of the applicant's request now. It's currently undeveloped, but the applicant is proposing a planned development concept plan for an extension, pretty much, for... to the Colonial Gardens development that is already approved. This will be... His proposal is to include both of them under the same HOA, to my understanding, and almost have them share a lot of the amenities that are in open space that's provided in both developments. The applicant is requesting for one modification to the underlying zoning, which is allowed through the planned development process. The proposal only provides two and a half acres approximately of open space when 3.6 acres is required. But the applicant is proposing to develop both this and Colonial Gardens to the... or Colonial Highlands to the east as one subdivision, and sharing that open space is part of that. So the previously approved Colonial Highlands had more open space than required, and so the applicant is asking to allow the extra open space allowed in Colonial Highlands to count towards the open space required in the subject property, the gardens at Colonial Highlands. However, even when including the open space for both developments, they are still approximately a quarter acre short. The staff does recommend that this modification is approved if the applicant includes a 20-foot-wide open-space tract with a 5-foot sidewalk between lots 36 and 37. And the main purpose behind that... Lots 36 and 37 are located in this upper northwest corner, and located here would be where that open-space tract would be between lots 36 and 37. Main purpose behind that is to provide an extra pedestrian pathway to future Major Road and better connecting that portion of the development to the commercial that is supposed... proposed along Seven Highway, providing a walking path between the two, rather than having pedestrians walking all the way around the subdivision and back to walk to the grocery store, proposed over there. So that's one of the conditions of approval that staff recommends. Going on to describe the remainder of the development, the proposed subdivision does have one access drive along Major Road on the north side, and then one access drive to Wyatt Road, proposed. For Phase One, which is the bottom half of the development, the southern half, the road improvements to Wyatt Road have already been completed by Timothy Lutheran when they first final platted that. So the only improvements required for the... road improvements required, at least for the first phase, will be any additional improvements required through the traffic study that we have not yet received but will be required prior to final plat. So anything... Any turn lanes or anything required by that traffic study will need to be installed prior to final plat approval. Additionally, Phase Two, full road improvements for half the property are required prior to final plat for that Phase Two along Major Road. Subject property does not actually have enough sewer capacity in the NID district to service the proposed number of lots that they are... or number of units that they are proposing. However, Timothy Lutheran Church does have more sewer capacity than they probably need, and staff did recommend as a condition that I'll notarized letter be required from Timothy Lutheran relinquishing that sewer capacity to allow the development of Colonial Garden... or the Gardens of Colonial Highlands to actually have enough sewer to service everyone. Staff did receive that letter late last week. We didn't include it in this packet, since it was provided to us later. Then the agenda went out, but staff did receive that, and that condition of approval has been met. Beyond that, the illustrative plan does show some of the details... There we go. Illustrative plan does show some of the details of the open-space areas and some landscaping, but all of that should be finalized, the landscaping, tree preservation, if there are any, and any improvements to the common areas must be addressed in that final open-space plan required with the planned development final plan. The applicant also did provide some preliminary building elevations with this concept plan, and these building elevations are similar to those found in the approved plan for the Colonial Highlands development next door. But further detail will be required in terms of design and layout of the buildings prior to the planned development, final plan approval. With that, I will stand for any questions.
Are there any questions for Mr. Jury? Yes, Commissioner.
The illustrations that you've got showing right now include one- and two-story buildings, but the descriptive says only one story. Are there going to be both, or is this...
I believe there will be both. That might have been a mistake on my part. The descriptor is shown in... that is showing one-story buildings. Where's that found?
Yeah.
In the staff report?
All single-story with one-car front-loaded garages.
Is that on the plane?
Where you say architectural character.
Oh, yeah, that must have been a mistake on my end.
And do we know if these are going to be sold individually or rented, or what the disposition is going to be on these?
All of the applicant provide that question... or answer that question.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Jury. Would the applicant like to come forward? You'll need to be sworn in.
Can you bring it? Do you some extra work? The best of your possibilities, please. Do you do so?
I do.
Randy Salee, 3730 Northeast Trune Drive, Lee Summit, Missouri, 64064 is the office address. And in answer to Ken's question about the variety of units, one of the requests from the council whenever we did the rezoning was they did not want to basically have a streetscape of looking down the street and having same unit time after time again, so...
I fully agree with that.
Well, what we proposed was... And we did propose this when we did the rezoning as well, but we had a mixture of two-story and single-story units. And I believe each plan has three elevations, three different elevations on each plan. I'm not sure if we've had the renderings done of all three elevations yet or not, but we will have that before we go before the council. And I know that our architect is working on some variety of plans. The footprints will probably be the same, though. They'll probably be mostly the same layout with, again, as you see, single-car garages and three-bedroom units. Some might be two-bedroom, but for the most part, they'll all be three-bedroom units. So we're kind of thinking that the old... the single-story will serve the my age and above, 55 and older group, and then there will be young families as well that we think will live in here. And the question on owning or selling is we plan to own and retain the units. We plan to do all the exterior maintenance, again, through the... let the homeowners association have a fee that we'll pay each month to pay mowing service and landscaping, keeping up on the landscaping, and they will... this community will be able to use the pool that we're installing right now. Swim Things is putting... getting our pool put into Colonial Highlands right now, and both communities will be able to use the walking trail and the pool that'll be for Colonial Highlands.
Are there any other questions for the applicant? I do have a question, sir. They've... the sidewalk between the two lots, are you planning to fence along that at all?
No, we're not planning on having any fencing at all. If people do want to have fences, they'll have to be underground. Again, for maintenance purposes, it's a lot easier to maintain and keep looking nice if we'll keep it unfenced. And I know that'll probably be an issue with some families that might want a fenced-in yard, but we've just found in the past that they are harder to maintain. It's harder for our mowers to get in the backyards and keep it looking nice, so we will not have fencing on these buildings at all.
All right, thank you. Are there any other questions? All right, now, I'll call and ask if there is anyone in favor that would like to come forward. If not, is there anyone that is opposed to this plan? Hearing none? All right, now, Commissioners, do you have any other comments or questions or anything that you'd like... Commissioner Billups?
Just a quick comment. I know this has already been approved for two families, so I'm not even going to get into that, but I would like, if you get a chance, to look at some other footprints as well. That would be great, because this footprint's getting kind of tired. This single-story footprint, we see it all over town, and I'd really like to see something new and a little bit different. I know you're putting a little bit different face on it, but it's still the same old footprint. Like to see something different.
Any other comments? I'm not good. All right, hearing none, I'm going to close the public hearing, and I would entertain a motion, and we will vote on number three first.
Madam Chairman.
Yes, Commissioner?
Make a motion to approve public hearing, planned development concept PDC 06175906 with the 13 conditions.
I'll second it.
I've been instructed that we need to remove recommendation number three, since we already have the letter on... notarized record... letter on record. So we'll remove number three, so that would be 12 conditions, correct?
I'll amend motion to 12, omitting number three.
Okay.
Second.
It's already been seconded.
Third and seconded?
Yes.
I didn't hear it, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Commissioner Fairbanks?
Yeah, that's fine.
All right. So now, we will vote on that with the 12 conditions. So it will be a roll call?
Yes. Planning Commissioner Cradoff?
Aye.
Commissioner Wallace?
Aye.
Commissioner Graham?
Aye.
Commissioner Fairbanks?
Aye.
Commissioner Bartalata?
Aye.
Commissioner Duhan?
Aye.
Commissioner Billups?
Aye.
Commissioner Haney?
Aye.
Chairman Banks?
Aye. That will go to... That's been approved, correct?
Yes.
And that will go to the City Council for August the 7th, and they also meet at 6:00, so if you need to attend. Now, we will vote on the preliminary plat. Do I need just a minute... motion on that?
Madam Chairman, make a motion to approve the preliminary plat PPE 05175837 with 12 conditions minus number three.
Okay. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay. Commissioner Duhan? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Same sign. Hearing none, the motion's carried. Thank you very much. All right, now, we'll go to number five. That's Scooters Coffee. Mr. Jury's going to take care of that, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Banks and Commissioners. Before you is the request from the applicant for the approval of a master alternate sign plan for Scooters Coffee, which is located within the Country Club Shopping Center. It's GB zoning, as you can see on the map, and there's an existing... there's an existing shopping center with several existing signs on it, and there's an existing monument or a pole sign as well. So the applicant is requesting for the approval of an additional four... four signs, wall signs, and a menu board. And they... the four wall signs go to the building elevations here. One on each elevation, north, east, south, and west. They're... the north and south wall signs are their logo, and then the east and west wall signs are the text for Scooters Coffee. The menu board is shown here as well, and will be located on the north side of the building. The request for this master sign plan is coming before you since, I guess, two reasons. One, the west... or the east and the south wall signs are technically not allowed by the sign code, but as we have previously allowed signs that aren't facing the right-of-way or above a main entrance. We've allowed wall signs like that in the past, and staff does believe that this is a reasonable request. The other reason why this is coming before us is that the existing signage on the development does actually... with the addition of Scooters signs, does actually exceed the allowed signage for the amount of lot frontage alongside Seven Highway that the applicant... or the property, Country Club Shopping Center, has. There are numerous wall signs on the existing facade of the shopping center, and then also the existing pole sign as well. However, no changes are being requested to those, and there is a section in the code that does allow a minimum of 50 square feet of signage per lot. And while this already has more than 50 square feet of signage per lot for this one lot, staff does believe that the intent of that was to allow every business in the city at least some signage. And since Scooters is in addition to this existing development, staff does believe that this request is also reasonable. They are requesting for an extreme amount of signage, only 66 square feet, and between the medallion and the raceway signs, the menu board does not count towards the total square footage of signage allowed for the development, but the wall signs do, and those equal 66 square feet, and staff does believe that this is a reasonable request. So with that, staff does recommend approval of the master sign plan with two conditions, and will stand for any questions.
Are there any questions for Mr. Jury? Public Commissioners?
I have a question.
Commissioner?
I've seen lots of comments from people wanting to know what's going on there and, you know, what it's going to look like. Has the city received any positive or negative comments that you know of regarding Scooters?
None that I know of. I don't know if anyone else in community development have. No?
Okay. Thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments? Okay. I would entertain a motion then for Scooters... Sco... Oh, I'm sorry. The applicant, would they like to come forward? Moving right along, thank you. That's why I have her right here.
Good, that's a good right-hand man. We're good.
No, you don't have to be sworn in. You can just comment if you'd like to.
No, I'm Mackenzie Sykes, and me and my mom are the ones who own these Scooters Coffee locations in town.
Oh, you need to move it up to the microphone, make sure...
Yeah. So me and my mom are the ones who own these Scooters Coffee locations in town, and I'm the one who's the operating partner, and just from an operations standpoint, signage and site location is the next most important thing to operations. So we would just really appreciate your guys' approval on this, so that people driving by can see our building and come by and get a good cup of coffee on their way to work.
Okay. Do you have any... Commissioners have any comment... questions for or anything? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you guys.
Okay. She's keeping me a check over here. You know, I don't know how Travis did it and Billups and all. Okay, so now, we can go ahead, and I'll entertain a motion if I don't hear anything else, so...
Madam Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Billups?
I would move for approval of ASP 06175905, alternate sign plan for Scooters Coffee with the two recommendations.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay. Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carried. All right, now, we'll go down to, I think, Mr. Wright is going to take care of presenting the Ridgewood Place. We're going to hear six, seven, and eight together, and we will vote on them separately.
All right, thank you, Chairman Banks and Commissioners. Before you this evening is a request for a PUD final plan for Ridgewood Place at Chapman Farms, which is located... includes approximately 34.5 acres located north of Southeast Mason School Road, east of the shores and Greenbrier subdivisions. This subdivision does include 98 single-family lots with seven common tracks. The Planning Commission recommended approval of an amended PUD concept plan and approve an amended preliminary plat back on April 24th. The City Council denied the amended PUD concept plan on May 1st, which made the approved preliminary plat noncompliant with the approved PUD concept plan from 2007. Therefore, the applicant went back and reorganized the site. The general layout is still the same, but they did reduce the lots from 104 to 98 lots, which brings it in substantial compliance with the concept plan by reducing... by decreasing the overall density increase below the 2% for the entire single-family portion of Chapman Farms. And more details on that is included in page four of the final plan, staff report. All lot sizes, widths, and setbacks now meet the minimum standards for SF-7 zoning district, which includes 25-foot front, 15-foot rear, and 8-foot sideyard setbacks. The PUD also, along with the application, they did include renderings of the homes. These were... these are really unchanged from their earlier proposals, which show that the home styles and building materials are consistent with other homes approved and homes constructed in the other subdivisions within Chapman Farms. They've also provided a conceptual plan for the community pool that will be developed, and then also the entry monument that will be installed in two locations... the two entrances along Mason School Road. A landscape plan was also provided, which shows the street trees. They've met the required street trees for every lot, as well as landscaping that has been shown in the common tracks, specifically down along the... along the trail, the 8-foot trail and swimming pool down in the southwest corner of the The second request is for an amended preliminary plat. Again, this is for 98 single-family lots and seven common tracks. This request amends the preliminary plat that was approved on April 24th. Again, all lots meet the minimum SF-7 standards. The proposed minimum livable floor areas are provided in... starting on page five of the staff report, and they propose the same three classifications that were proposed back in April. So the first is an 1800-square-foot, three-car garage, ranch-style home, and 2,000... So, the first is an 1,800-square-foot three-car garage ranch-style home and 2,000, or 2,200 square-foot other homes, which is in this northern section that will back up to the Shores. Then the second classification is a 1,600-square-foot three-car garage ranch and 2,000 square-foot for all other homes, which is in sort of this middle section here, and then down the east side of the east property, and then the western three lots adjacent to Greenbrier. And then the remaining lots that are in the middle, these would all be 1,400-square-foot three-car garage ranch homes and 1,800-square-foot for all other homes. And then the last request is for a final plat for the first, for the first plat, which includes 34 single-family lots and three common tracks, which includes the 8-foot trail and community pool. The applicant has provided a financial guarantee for the landscaping sidewalks and trails that are located in the common tracks, and those are, will be required to be completed prior to approval of the second plat. Landscaping and sidewalks on individual lots will be required to be installed prior to approval of a certificate of occupancy for each individual lot. And then a draft declaration of restrictions has also been provided, that this plat would be included with the HOA that's currently in effect for Lakeside, Greenbrier and the Shores, and that must be recorded and submitted prior to approval of any building permits within the development. One change that the applicant has made from this is that they have listed CMH Parks as the legal name of the owner. On here, it says Clayton Properties Group. Both of those names are doing businesses, some at homes, and they're just changing that name. That's the owner of record, so they're going to update that, so they can make sure that it gets recorded at the county property properly. There was also a removal of a few labels last Thursday after the agenda was sent out, but that did not have any impact on the plat boundaries, streets or anything else. It was just a couple of label errors, and those have been changed, and those are shown on here correctly. So, that was uploaded Friday. Other than that, staff does recommend approval of the PUD final plan with 15 conditions, approval of the preliminary plat with 15 conditions, and approval of the final plat with 11 conditions, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Do the Commissioners have any questions for Mr. Wright? Yes, Commissioner Billups.
I think you just clarified, I was, excuse me, a little confused when I was reading the staff report on the PUD, because initially you say that it is in compliance with the PUD concept plan, and then later on you say it is non-compliant with the approved PUD concept plan from 2007. So, what are we compliant, what are we compliant with and what aren't we compliant with?
So, we, the plan that is presented this evening is it's in substantial compliance with the 2007 PUD concept plan. It was not in compliance with the last preliminary plat that was approved back in April.
That was in compliance with the plan we approved, but council denied?
Yes, correct. So, the last PUD concept plan was not, that was reviewed by the commission and recommended for approval back in April, was not in substantial compliance with the 2007 plan. And therefore, they also submitted a preliminary plat that was not in compliance with that plan, hoping that it would be approved, but since it was denied, they had to come back and redo the preliminary plat, amend that preliminary plat to match the concept plan.
Okay, so everything now is in compliance with 2007?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wright. I guess that's all. All right, so I'll entertain a motion. We'll vote, we'll make motions on each one separately and vote on them separately.
Mister applicant.
Oh, applicant. Boy, I just forget about the applicants. Here you are. It just seems like it's...
She wants to vote.
She's going to hit me here in a minute.
If it's going to hurt my case, I'll stay quiet.
No, I just move it right along here.
Matt's Kitchen Drink Solutions, 50 Southeast 30th Street. You know, for the sake of brevity, it's kind of the same plan and presentation we've had before. I think one thing to bring back up, you know, like I say, I'm happy to answer any questions as you have them, please let me know, but, you know, this is that same kind of idea. Essentially, what we've done is we've reduced it down to 98 lots. So, it's still the same idea, where we're going to have the three different home types and styles in there, the various sizes. What we've done, though, is now we meet all of the SF7 zoning requirements. So, we think it simplified the process in the sense of all the homes will meet the requirements that are asked for in that area, which we think was one of the major concerns. So, one of the other things that has come up that we want to present is the pool was kind of a conversation of when it would start and how it would start. The plan is to have this online by next spring. So, we'll start that this fall if we can, or over the winter, but by next spring, the residents of the first phase will have a pool that'll be there ready to use. So, a couple of little things, I think, just to update that we had comments on last time. So, with that, I'm here for any questions, but otherwise, like I say, I'll keep it brief, but there's a lot of information if you want to see.
I won't forget you next time. All right, are there any questions for the applicant?
Could you go back to that color-coded slide that shows Phase 1?
Yeah.
I just want to make sure that I'm clear. The green ones are the 1,400 square feet, right?
The 1,400 square feet in this situation would be the peach kind of colors in this heritage section. The greens would be that 1,600, and then the blues would be the 1,800.
Okay, that's, the heritage and the lifestyle were confused when Matt was...
Now, there is a little difference in the sense of because of the way your zoning code allows step downs, the use is actually highlighted here with what stories can actually go down. So, we do have an area that's shown in here that can be a 1,400-square-foot ranch. However, that green area, we still plan to be that lifestyle, so that will be kept up. The only area we plan to have that smaller 1,400-square-foot footprint would be kind of in that peach area, that kind of light red color. So, there is a little difference in what is allowed versus what we're going to do, but, you know, so that, this would be your true map of what livable floor areas are allowed, but the green, the blue and the red kind of indicate what our intended home types and uses will be.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Are there any other questions or comments? Guess not. Okay, now I can bring it forward and entertain a motion for the Plan Development Final Plan. Do I hear any motions?
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir. Bail me out.
I would move for approval of PUD F 06175909, the Ridgewood Place at Chapman Farms planned unit development final plan, with the 15 staff recommendations.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay. All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Same sign, motion carried. What about the preliminary plat? Do I entertain a motion?
Would you like me to continue?
Go right ahead.
I would also move for approval of PP 06175908, the amended preliminary plat for Ridgewood Place at Chapman Farms, again with 15 conditions.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Same sign, motion carried. Final plat.
Why not? Let's go on with approval for, motion for approval of PF 06175910, the final plat of Ridgewood Place at Chapman Farms, first plat with 11 conditions.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Commissioner Duhan? All right. That will be a recommendation to the City Council, also for August the 7th at 6:00. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carried. Thank you all very much. Okay, now we'll go on to other business, and I'll first let Scott, I think Scott, you had something you wanted to share?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Tomorrow night, as well as Thursday night, we'll be hosting our public input meetings for the C2 area plan. The area generally is bounded by Seven Highway to the eastern city limits, kind of the limits of future growth, and then to the north with I-70, and to the south with Moley School Road. Tomorrow, we're trying to focus on kind of the north half of that, so from AA up to I-70. Folks are welcome to attend. It's at the Adams Point Golf Club at the clubhouse from 6:30 to 8:00. We're also hosting one just for businesses in the overall C2 area, since there are a number of businesses in that area, not the least of which would be, for example, all the development around, you know, south side of I-70 along the Hamzaire Parkway, all those businesses there. So, we do want to get input from, not just from residents, but also from businesses, you know, property owners and such. And that's from 4:00 to 6:00 tomorrow, same location, the Adams Point Golf Club clubhouse. So, the meetings are at the clubhouse at the golf course tomorrow, and then on Thursday from 6:00 to 7:30, we'll be hosting at the Blue Springs South High School Library, not the Blue Springs South Branch Library, but the Blue Springs South High School Library. So, and again, that's from 6:00 to 7:30 on Thursday. So, Tuesday and Thursday this week, invite anybody here from Planning Commission, you are interested and available to attend one or more of those meetings, please let Karen know. And again, anybody who's listening in the audience at home, what have you, certainly welcome to attend, especially if you do live or work or own property in that area, as I described. So, again, there's information on the city website as well, under public hearings, under the Agenda Center tab. We also have an informational page already started under the Conference of Plan. So, again, this is continuing, we should have a conference of plan, our planning process for these specific area plans or neighborhood plans. So, this is the next one I'm working on here this year, this summer, and I look forward to seeing folks there Tuesday and/or Thursday.
Okay, thank you very much. Well, we do have some other business, because we're going to be losing one of our Commissioners this evening. His last night is tonight. Mr. Bartalata is leaving us, so if I could ask you to come down front with me. I guess we could go to the same place.
You'll end up in the same place.
Yeah. I have to be there. Okay. Come here. You got me. Blue Springs. I bet all this. Five years.
You will be missed.
Oh, we should use the mic. Tibetan. Okay, this time I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
Madam Chair. Before we adjourn?
Yes, sir.
I would like to make a small request of the staff. With the revised plan, or rules and everything else that we adopted, I know that you guys are administratively approving some smaller projects and things like that, and would it be possible for us to get some kind of a summary or listing of those projects, especially the commercial projects, as you approve them? I know in my position, I get a lot of what's going on here, what's going up here, and on some of these smaller projects, I don't have an answer for them right now. I know specifically, there's a, I guess, an addition that's going on at Moley Chevrolet on one of their smaller buildings, and there's also, it looks like a very sizable addition to a small church on Arti Mize, that I'm assuming you guys have approved, and I'd like to be able to answer those questions when they come forward. So, if we could get some kind of a summary or something like that on those projects as they're approved, that would be really helpful.
Very good idea.
Madam Chair, yeah, certainly, Commissioner Billups, yes, certainly we can put something like that together. For example, I know Mr. Jury puts together a weekly kind of building permit update and what's been recently approved. Karen and other planning division staff have recently resurrected plan notes. We just had our first issue of that. I think it's going to be kind of a monthly thing. So, we have weekly and monthly, and hopefully that's, in terms of timing, would be sufficient, but certainly let us know, too, if it's something that needs to be at a certain interval. Certainly make sure we can keep up with that as well.
That'd be great, thank you.
Very good. Anything else? All right. Hearing none, I entertain a motion to adjourn. Okay.
I was going to do it, but I won't do that favor for you.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, meeting's adjourned.